Council Agenda: Township Precipity Troy Hills, Regular Township Council Meeting of July 22, 2025. Introduction: Posting of Notice. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the Bolton Board at the Municipal Building on December 2, 2024, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and New York Star Ledger on December 6, 2024. May I please ask everyone to stand for the flag salute?
We just fly the United States of America, a good republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mr. Hernandez? Mr. McGrath?
Here.
Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Jamie Cryon, Mayor James Barbario, Township Attorney Michael Lavery, Municipal Clerk Collette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. Can we begin?
Yes, please.
Okay, fantastic. Upcoming meetings: August 5, 2025, at 7:00 PM is the Agenda Meeting; August 19, at 7:00 PM is the Regular Meeting. Moving along to Ordinances: The Second Reading and Public Hearing, Ordinance 2025-10, An Ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills Adopting the 169 Lakewanna Ave., Block 136, Lot 33 Redevelopment Plan. The Notice for Ordinance 2025-10 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on June 24, 2025, and introduced at the June 17, 2025, Regular Meeting. Motion to accept the ordinance 2025-10 be heard in its second and final reading, please.
Motion.
We're gonna have to move faster tonight, guys. We have a lot on the agenda. So, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Public Hearing, may I please have a motion for the public hearing?
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only. Anyone? Seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Roll call, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to...
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 2025-11: An Ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills and the County of Morris, New Jersey, authorizing the acquisition by purpose of properties located in township through the Township Open Space Recreation Flood Plan Protection and Farming and Historic Preservation Program. The Notice for Ordinance 2025-11 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on June 24 and introduced at the June 17, 2025, Regular Meeting. May I please have a motion to accept? 2025-11? Not that fast, Mr. Neglia. Thank you, though. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Public Hearing, may I please have a motion to open up the public hearing to the public?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
And Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Floor is open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on this ordinance only. Seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Thank you. Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-12: An Ordinance of the Township Council of Township Precipity Troy Hills Adopting the 4 Gate Hall Drive Redevelopment Plan. The Notice for Ordinance 2025-12 was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, on June 24, 2025, and introduced at the June 17, 2025, Regular Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2025-12?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Public Hearing, may I please have a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2025-12?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi? Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that said ordinance of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above ordinance 2025-12?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public session, I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. McGrath. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, so the floor is open to the public. You have five minutes to speak on any topic. Please sign in and state your name at the mic before speaking. Thank you.
Hold on, man. We just gotta turn the mic on. Probably doesn't matter. Okay, my name is Gabe Boyle, and I have a question. I'd like to know how one initiates the process of amending an ordinance, specifically the one concerning the destruction or removal of trees. Lately in town, there's been a lot of indiscriminate cutting down of mature, healthy trees. We know what happened on Twin Oaks Drive, where a lot of the diseased ash trees had to be cut down, and the result is this sun-dive desert-like street. But we also have residents cutting down healthy trees, which, I mean, I'm not a tree hugger, but the trees beautify our town. And it seems that a lot of these people are cutting down the trees for no good reason either, because there's too much shade on our swimming pool, or whatever. Most recently, this tree cutting happened on Druid Hill Drive, a street known for its beautiful canopy of silver maples. My husband and I spend a lot of time on that street canvassing for Mr. Musella. Anyway, on that occasion, at least one 60-year-old healthy tree beside the road was cut down, leaving a large gap in the canopy. On that day and the next, I encountered neighbors who were really upset by this. In fact, one is a former member of the Environmental Committee. They couldn't believe that this was allowed to happen. So, as a result, I looked up the tree removal ordinance, and I was shocked to learn that residents can cut down up to four live trees exceeding three inches in diameter without the town's permission. My husband, Mark, and I have a healthy 250-year-old linden tree on our property. It sickens us to think that the next owner could take down this tree under which members of Washington's Continental Army could have rested in its shade. There's an adage among hikers, "Leave it better than you found it." Considering that the median duration of homeownership in this country is only 13 years, according to the National Association of Realtors, many residents of our town will move on, their only legacy being the destruction of trees that will take generations to repair. Our trees, which give Precipiny's neighborhoods such beauty, deserve more protection than the current ordinance can give them. Is this something that I can initiate, a change to this ordinance, or does it have to go through the Environmental Committee? Thank you.
You can actually, um... make the request what you just did, and I'll speak to the Parks and Forestry Director.
Okay.
We like to get insight from them anytime trees are being removed from properties and replace them and stuff like that, so...
Okay.
But we also are in the process of getting that changed because there's a state requirement to change the tree ordinance
Oh, good.
for exactly that reason.
Great.
About... Well, municipalities are required to have a replacement portion put into the town's ordinances, so people cannot just do that anymore. Too bad, because I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not in place yet, right?
Council President?
Yes.
So, the draft ordinance is with the Township Engineer and the Superintendent of Parks and Forestry right now, being reviewed. After that, it will be shared with the council and the Green Team as well.
Okay, thank you.
I'll try. My name's Mark Philhauer. I'm Gabe Boyle's husband. I brought a little reading material. Dr. Seuss often had some words of wisdom. "I am the Lorax. I speak for the trees. I speak for the trees, for the trees have no tongues." Why should we care about our neighborhood trees? Aren't they only the concern of the residents on whose land they're located? In so many ways, trees are a community good. According to the influential architect and community planner Doug Kelbaugh, one street tree on a block raises the value of every tree on that... every house on that block by $2,000, except the house where the street tree is located, the value of which is raised by $7,000. If the street is lined with trees, the value of every house is raised by $22,000. The National Association of Realtors and the U.S. Forest Service are in agreement on those numbers. A street tree lined with trees can be more than 15 degrees cooler than a street without trees. Anyone who's walked along Druid Hill Road and following that by Twin Oaks Road will testify to that. Properly placed, trees reduce air conditioning aids by 30% to 50%. In winter, trees act as windbreaks, saving 20% to 50% in heating bills. Some owners worry about trees in severe winds, storms, but numerous trees together protect each other and nearby homes. Trees are pollution removers in thousands of pounds. It's not a small amount. They block noise. Trees can reduce noise 5 to 10 decibels. That's a 50% reduction in perceived noise. As I walked along Druid Hill toward home the other day, I looked up at the oaks in the park and along Maplewood Drive and was reminded of the most important reason for protecting our trees. So much of what we live with every day is so small and so ephemeral. As they loom over us, 80 feet or more in height, they remind us that the world contains great things that span ages, 60, 100, 200 years old. They remind us that the world was here before us and will be here after we're gone. They give us so much, they deserve our protection. Thank you.
Thank you. There'll be... We'll be having, I hope, when we present this, lots of presentation to the public on the ordinance and just the very things that you were talking about, the myriad advantages for the trees and their community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A little more comfortable. So, I just want to start off with some old business.
Please state your name, sir.
Eric Zimmerman, 108 Hiawatha Boulevard. So, some old business. I showed up, I believe it was on the 17th of last month, and one of my major reasons why I was speaking was to sort of enshrine our right to five minutes at the microphone. Obviously, today it's not an issue, but there have been some big issues in the past where we have decided to try to kate the time down to three minutes or one minute. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe that that's against the rules. So, I want to make sure that we can all agree that, A, we get that, and B, there's consequence if someone stops that from happening, some kind of remedy. So, I'm asking you guys, am I wrong about the first part? Is our five minutes enshrined to us?
So, can I...
After he asks all his questions.
So, what the Council President's saying, if you can ask all your questions, and then we'll answer all your questions, all at once.
Okay. Well, if that's the case, then I would like to ask if there's a way we can put a motion or a conversation together where we can make sure that our five minutes is protected, and if you guys overstep that, there's a consequence to you. Number two, it's really cold in here. It's really nice, and I wish I could say the same thing for the Lake Hiawatha Library. I was speaking with some people at the library, and I found out that the system in place that broke down, that Frank Neglia was kind enough to work with on the replacement. I hear that's coming soon. That's wonderful. It was long overdue. It really shouldn't have happened. As a new father, I'm starting to really, really recognize the importance of a functional, working, accessible library. And to hear that it went... Basically, this is how inside was outside for all of summer. It's unacceptable. It's a cooling center. It's a place for seniors. It's a place for me. It's a place for my kids. And it should be open. Damn, we're paying for it, aren't we? And I haven't heard of any solid plan of us retaining that library for ourselves. I've heard a lot about where are we going to move it, maybe leasing the place out from a businessman and giving the businessmen their hard-earned money as rent so we can exist in the Rite Aid or something like that, the former Rite Aid. That's all well and good. That might get us by in the short term. But are we ready to invest our surplus into real estate? A good library? A gem for us to be proud of? Or are we going to throw Band-Aid on it and throw our hard-earned taxpayer dollars into some man's wallet? I don't agree with that. I think we should be looking at some long-term solutions, and I think we should invest in ourselves with the surplus that we've worked so hard to get. And the last thing I want to say is figuring all of this out was hard. I wasn't able to get any information really from anyone at Town Hall. So, I'm asking, did I misstep? Did I, by trying to request a meeting with the mayor or tried to request a meeting with someone underneath him who could answer some of my questions directly instead of making me wait until this meeting to get some? And some brief answers, because we only got five minutes. I think this is worthy of a discussion, of a conversation, because I have my neighbors who actually have some great ideas, maybe ones you haven't thought of. But you're not going to hear them unless you have a conversation. And we're never going to have a conversation if the gate is kept and if I'm being told the mayor has no appointments. Seems strange. So, that's why I'm here, and that's why I have to say. And I would really appreciate some answers and guidance on this.
Okay, so I'll just take the question pertaining to the five minutes, Mr. Zimmerman. Well, thank you, first of all. First, let me start by saying the public's right to speak is very important. In fact, it's so important that the state has put it in a state statute saying that the public must be allowed to speak at all public meetings, and it's called a public session. However, what the state has done, it has not put a specific time limit. They left that up to the townships or municipalities. So, they're allowed to put whatever time they please, unfortunately, whether it's one minute, three minutes, four minutes, five minutes. And if you look at other municipalities, you'll see that. It varies municipality by municipality. The key is, is every person gets the same amount of time. That's the key. In our bylaws or in that statute...
We can't back and forth. We have answers...
You can ask me after the meeting. Thank you for that. Library, anyone have the library for me?
I'm gonna respond to Mr. Zimmerman when my report comes.
Okay.
I'm not gonna respond. I'm gonna do that with every individual that asks me questions.
And scheduling for speaking with town officials.
Is that gonna be... That'll be answered in your report to... About scheduling at meetings?
Scheduling a meeting with town officials.
That will be...
Okay.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
So, if you mess up the mic, you can no longer speak on the mic. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, may I please have a motion to close the public session?
Motion. Second.
How made the initial motion? I apologize.
Uh, Councilman Neglia.
Okay.
So, motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed within the asterisk are considered routine and non-controversial by the Township Council, will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the Council number so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of minutes for the Agenda Meeting of 6:25, 6:30, 25, and the Regular Meeting of 6:17. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. McGrath?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
And Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving along to Presentations and Reports. Mayor?
Yes, um, I know we have the Affordable Housing Element Plan. I thought you would go earlier, but once this is over with, you know, educate the Department with regards to the Affordable Housing Element. But, you know, this has been going around for a long time here, affordable housing. I did write a different statement from last week, two weeks ago, and I'm gonna reiterate. Affordable housing... Excuse me. I changed glasses. Affordable housing is one of the most pressing issues facing communities across New Jersey, and Precipiny is no exception. But as we work to meet our legal and moral responsibilities, we must also be honest about the challenges and trade-offs involved and demand a more thoughtful, common sense approach from policymakers in Trenton. Unfortunately, we've seen in recent years anything but thoughtful. The affordable housing mandates pushed through by Democratic lawmakers in Trenton have placed enormous burdens on suburban municipalities, often with little regard for local infrastructure, school capacity, or community character. These mandates have left towns scrambling to meet arbitrary quotas with limited flexibility and few resources to do so in a way that works for the people who actually live here in Precipiny. And let me be clear. I believe that affordable housing has a place in the community. It's essential that working families, seniors, and young professionals can afford to live in towns they serve, the towns they grew up in, and the towns they love. We have teachers, police officers, nurses, and store business owners who deserve a place here. How we provide that housing and where matters just as much as to why. We cannot afford to build blindly or irresponsibility... Excuse me. Dumping high-density housing on already strained neighborhoods with no regards to traffic, school enrollment, or local services. It's not progress, it's poor planning by the state of New Jersey. We must be strategic, and that means looking at vacant, which we've been doing, underutilized properties coordinated with schools and traffic engineers, ensuring developers to pay their fair share and listen into the residents in every step of the way. My point is that, over the many years I've been mayor and when I was a councilman, the state has imposed these draconian affordable housing regulations on towns like Precipiny, towns in Morris County. That's why we're one of 27 towns that are suing the state with regards to affordable housing, because it's not affordable for our people. It's not affordable for the people that live here in Precipiny. And that's where I have a problem with these laws, that they are forcing us to pass. And if we don't pass them, as you see, what's gone on throughout all of New Jersey, towns will lose their immunity. And basically, what that means, when we lose our immunity, we have no control over zoning or over planning. The courts have control. And they will put the housing where they want to put it and how many units they want. So, they pretty much tie our hands on to what we have to do and what we can do for our community, because it's not for our community. As you know, and I've said this many times, I'm an affordable housing administrator. I know, I know that people need housing. But the people here in Precipiny that come up to me on a regular basis, from our seniors to those families that are finding it very hard to survive, they don't get any of that affordable housing. they don't get any of that affordable housing. Because of these laws and these rules that are made in Trenton, that are made in the urban areas, and that's where the housing should go, because that's what is needed. We must have a regional contribution agreement where we could send money down to the urban areas, but I guess they'll never use it for what it was supposed to be used for, housing. So, when you send money down to another district and they don't use it for that, well, they should be, they should get in trouble. But now Parsippany is gonna be facing so many challenges, because this is for the, this 10 years, and we still have, um, affordable housing numbers that are left over from round three. We're in round four now. And you're gonna get a presentation very shortly from, um, these two gentlemen in front of me who did a really good job. Um, and the affordable housing crisis, when you hear people say, you know, there's a crisis, housing crisis, yeah, there is a crisis. But let us, let us, uh, let our residents be the beneficiaries of it. And that's not what's gonna happen, and that's not what's happening. So, with that being said, you know, I'm gonna go on about the library with regards to what's going on with the library. First of all, we do not use surplus. Um, and it means, because it's not what you're supposed to do with your surplus. You don't use surplus to build a new library. You don't use that money. Those are for emergencies, those are for things like that. That's not what it's used for. Okay, the library, as I've stated many times, is pretty much the lab, it's the one that we have right now. And to put money into something like that, we might have to do it, because if we can't get, get an area where we can build something that, you know, the library, as it is now, we will be pumping money into a bad, bad situation. Okay, let's talk about the air conditioning unit. It's not like you can just go, I'm gonna go buy an air conditioner and put it in. It's not how it works. We have a law called procurement. Everybody knows what procurement is? I would hope so. Procurement is a process that you have to follow legally. You just can't say, I'm gonna go buy a $50,000 air conditioning unit, have somebody install it. A homeowner can do that, private industry can do it, but not public. We cannot publicly do that. We have to go on a bid, or if we have a co-op, which means the co-op does the bidding for us, then, then, then it makes a lot of use of it. Well, so here's what happened. Um, excuse me one moment. A lot of people like to say, oh, you know, you're not doing nothing about the library. I read some of the comments. First of all, that's bull. We are with regards to the, to the library. But I'm not in favor of sinking bad, good money into a bad, into a bad building. And I said that all along, since day one, when we, we talked about the library. The library was built in 1945, 47, something like that. So what happens is, we went through a direct install. So basically what happens with a direct install, if we were to do it originally, it would take us a lot longer to put the air conditioning unit in, because we have a process called procurement, which means we have to go through the bidding process, and once the bidding process is done, council asks to approve it, goes through ordinance, and then you have two readings, that's 60, maybe more days, because you have an estoppel period that you have to follow. With direct install, the library does it, they go, they, they apply, they got the direct install. Got some good news though for today. I've been in touch with Judge Essential Powell and White, because they have to approve the actual direct install um, agreement, because there's money there on the side there. So, I got this this morning, because we've been working on it. And this is from our building and maintenance director. Good evening, the AC equipment is being delivered late tomorrow, which is Wednesday morning, and we should have the air conditioning unit in by Friday, this Friday, so the Lake High water will have, will have, um, air conditioning as we speak. Now, Mr. Zimmerman, as you said, you made phone calls to my office, which you did do. Um, but you see, you have to understand something about me. When we've had meetings, you screamed and yelled at me, called me names in your meetings, and now you want to meet with me, and I, I really find that hard to meet with somebody that screams and yells and makes derogatory statements to me. Um, I won't meet with you, but I'm just telling you upfront, I didn't want to meet with you because the way you were at those meetings, the way you acted, I showed a lot of respect for individuals who come up to either agree with me or disagree with me. It doesn't matter. You showed no respect to myself and to the entire council. You cannot be ahead of what you want, but that's exactly what you did. So, that being said, you had your time to speak. It's my time to speak now.
No.
No, it, it, this is how the fuck.
It's not a public, um...
So, with that being said, I will meet with you, but under a condition that we respect each other, and I respected you at those meetings, but you do not respect any of us up here. So that being said, Council President, that's my report for tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, Township Council?
I, I just have one thing to say.
Go ahead.
I don't have a report, but I did ask twice if I could have a presentation, not August 5th?
Yes.
What he got back to me?
Yes, uh, that I apologize for.
10 minutes?
Um, we are still in the process of determining whether it's gonna be the first or the second meeting, uh, Council President. Uh, do we know yet, or we're still gonna, we'll talk about it off record.
Okay.
We'll talk about it off record.
But it, it's, it will either be the first or the second meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one thing, uh, I wanted to bring up. I had a, a couple of meetings ago, we had an individual come to our meeting and make an accusation that our police department racially profiled someone on a motor vehicle stop. Um, that we had, it was followed up by numerous residents that were as far away as two hours from here, that don't even live anywhere near our town, two hours south down the shore. Um, I spoke to the police chief, they conducted a full thorough investigation, they reviewed every body cam, they reviewed every, uh, vehicles camera, they reviewed every computer entry. Everything was investigated fully. That stop never happened by a Parsippany police officer. So, if it did occur in Parsippany, don't know who pulled that person over, um, but it did not occur by a Parsippany police officer. So I just wanted that out on the record, if there was anyone here that was at that meeting. Um, it was fully investigated, and the police chief assures that that did not occur by a Parsippany police officer in our town. Thank you.
Sinovia?
Uh, yes, I just want to give, uh, just a quick, uh, update on the PAL. Um, Nick Ronzina is doing an amazing amount of things there. Recently, he held, uh, wrestling matches, not exactly WWF, but clean wrestling matches, which are really very family orientated. A lot of kids and a lot of, a lot of people attended, and it was really good. We attended, we had a great time, and, um, it was just, uh, it was fun. It really was fun. And I just want to compliment all the good things he's doing. In addition to that, I think he recently had a trip to Yankee Stadium, he's doing a, uh, in conjunction with the Sons of Italy, a, a, a trip to the Somerset Patriots, and, uh, also he has, uh, I think, uh, Dallas Jet game, uh, scheduled for a couple of, I think, bus rides, if I'm not mistaken. But, uh, I just want to compliment the job he's doing, and I'm very impressed, and, uh, real happy to see that. Um, regarding the, um, library, Mayor Barbera gave a great report, and I'm excited to see that the, uh, air conditioning is going in and, um, tomorrow, and as he said, it's a process. You know, being a facility manager, I, I know sometimes the process is just getting, specking it out, then getting a contractor, then doing a load test, then getting it okay with the grid. There's a lot of things that have to go into it, aside from the items that, uh, Mayor Barbera said were in addition to it, I should say. So, it is a long process, and I'm just excited that it's going in tomorrow, and it'll be done by Friday. Thank you everyone for your hard work on that. I appreciate it. That's it.
Any other member from council? Okay, uh, Township Attorney?
Um, just that the Glenmont mediation continues. I think we've made some progress, and hopefully we'll have something good to report at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Business Administrator Jamie Klein?
Thank you, thank you, Council President. Um, we, uh, just following up on what Mayor talked about with the library, we met with the library uh, today with, uh, the Director and the Board Director, uh, who were very grateful for the hard work that the Township has put in, uh, in getting the AC unit up. Um, they were surprised that they, we were able to get it up ahead of schedule, and they were very grateful for that. Um, I believe we have a world-class library system. Yes, the, uh, there's a one branch that is, the building has some issues, but the main library branch is, uh, incredible, and it was open throughout this. The third branch of our library system, which most towns our size do not have three branches, uh, was also open during, uh, all of these heatwaves. Um, so, I congratulate the library staff, uh, especially the Director, uh, who's doing a great job to maintain, uh, and provide programs for our community. So, we're in good shape with that. The, uh, AC unit was delivered today at the main branch, it's going to be installed, and, um, we're good. As far as putting money in somebody else's pocket, as one of the residents said, uh, the Rite Aid spot that was talked about or is being, you know, uh, thought about, uh, is the preferred location of the library board and the library director. They want us to look into that. It's brand new, um, or it's, it's in very good shape, it's not brand new, but it's in very good shape. The owner of that building, uh, is a gentleman who is, I, we met with him today as well.
Yep.
All intents and purposes, he's a, a great guy. He does a lot for other towns, he, um, advocates for, uh, municipalities, wants to see a library happen. Now, it may not happen due to the, the, uh, financial impact, um, and the way that we are able to spend money and, um, utilize bond funds. So we may not be able to do it in the timeframe that he hopes to do it, but we're gonna give it our best shot. And one of the things that Mayor and I talked about today, and Mayor directed me to do, is to, uh, speak with their council and to do our best to have our council look into this and see how quickly we can get this going, and if it is possible. So, I'll be speaking with Mike Lavery later on today about this. Um, we have, uh, you know, another item that's important to talk about is, uh, the third quarter tax bills, uh, did not go out yet. The state was late in certifying, uh, their number. They just, uh, approving the number. So they just did that on July 18th, last Friday. So, uh, after it goes to the state, then it goes to the county. County is great at doing the due diligence with this stuff, but they just can't flip a switch and do it. So, the August 1st deadline will be extended, and the grace period will be extended to August 29th. The bills will be going out this week, um, and definitely by August 1st, uh, people should be receiving the bills. Uh, but it's important to understand that we will be able to extend that grace period to August 29th. If a resident or business does not pay in that timeframe, they're subject to, uh, penalties, um, back to August 1st, the statutory deadline. This is not our rule, this is the state code's rule. We have to follow it, because the state code tells us we have to follow it. Um, so, we want to make every effort to help the situation by extending this grace period, but we also want to remind residents that the, uh, August 1st deadline is hard and fast if you do, um, forego the August 29th, uh, period. Um, housing, well, before I, I get to the housing and the two gentlemen that are here, uh, I want to thank the, uh, council for, um, adopting the Corrective Action Plan, um, for the audit. Last meeting, we heard, uh, Valerie Dolan, our independent auditor, uh, who does this for, a lot, who's firm does this for a large number of municipalities in the state, um, tell us that, uh, it was a very clean report, particularly for a municipality our size, that there were no surprises, and we are in good shape, which she pointed out that we knew it at Budge Time. It's a good au, good audit with just general housekeeping items, uh, as you can see on the, uh, corrective action report. They will be, uh, addressed, definitely. The housing, uh, fourth round housing element, Fair Share. The Planning Board, as you know, unanimously adopted the, uh, Parsippany's 2025 Housing Element Fair Share Plan. Um, it confirms, which confirms our compliance with New Jersey's affordable housing mandates for the next decade. This is a 10-year plan. This isn't a today plan. So when you look at this plan and you see seven developments happening, and we're, uh, because we're complying with what is being mandated to us. We have 10 years to do this. So it's not today that all of these units are gonna happen. So, we have Dustin Glass here, who is our, our redevelopment council and our affordable housing council, uh, and Ed Snikis from Burgess Associates, who is our planner, uh, affordable housing planner, who, um, Ed has worked on our third round and now has worked on our fourth round, so he knows Parsippany incredibly well. Um, they, uh, these two gentlemen have worked incredibly hard to make sure that we have a compliant plan that, uh, minimizes our exposure to litigation, which really is the most important part of this now. We had to do 553 units according to DCA. DCA set these rules. We didn't say, hey, we want to build some, as many units as we possibly can. They told us we have to do that. We were able to reduce that by 10, over 10% to, uh, uh, to about 496, I believe the number is. And that's a very substantial and significant reduction that was also very careful and considered, uh, to, uh, maintain our, uh, you know, limit our exposure. DCA and Fair Share Housing sued a large number of municipalities, because they did not agree with their numbers. They did not sue us. They agreed that our 10% reduction to 496 was not worthy of contesting. The New Jersey Builders Association sued us, which Mayor has talked about many times, how, you know, how blatantly, you know, uh, uh, pigish it is to have the developers, uh, lobbyists sue us for more development, for affordable housing. So it's almost like, you know, uh, they're coming outright and saying, it doesn't matter about the affordable housing, we want our money, we want our big developments. So they sued us. Well, Dustin and Ed, uh, uh, met with us, and we put together a plan, Mayor, um, and the Affordable Housing Committee, made up of individuals, including Council President Karifi and Council Member McGrath, um, came up with a strategy to make sure that we complied. The courts said, well, you should settle, you should settle, you should settle with a higher number. We did this, and Ed can talk more about this, and Dustin can talk more about this, they did this in a way that was compliant and, 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 uh, real. It wasn't just throwing fake numbers out there. So, it, uh, we wound up winning that case, which was great. Um, so our number was 496. We were able to, utilizing bonus credits with these plans, we were able to utilize, uh, uh, you know, the bonus credits to reduce it by another 25%. So, with that, um, thank you to this council, thank you to, uh, uh, you know, Mayor, of course, uh, these two professionals here who are gonna get up and explain this to, to everybody. Um, but also to members of the public for understanding that this is not something that Mayor, the council, any professional wants to see happen. It's something we have to do. That's really what it's all about. Thank you. So with that, turn it over to Dustin Glass.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for, uh, entertaining the, uh, brief presentation tonight. I thought, uh, Mr. Klein, that was perfect, and a lot of my thunder has been stolen. Um, but at the same point, I'll provide the council just a little bit of background. I'll jump past a few things and get into the plan and how the plan came to be, and then, uh, Ed Snikis, the, uh, planner, will discuss a little bit more of the, I'll say, the intricacies of the plan and the, the method to the madness. Um, so as, uh, as we said, the, this state law changed in March of '24. Um, the affordable housing world, I'll just say, got turned on its head. There were just a lot of new rules. Statute came out that greatly accelerated the timelines, um, and put very strict timelines to get things done, such as the DCA issuing its report in October. Um, municipalities needing to determine whether they agreed with those numbers or disagreed with them, and if they disagreed, to explain why and to provide analysis as to why the number was incorrect. They had to do that by January of '25. Um, in this case, that, that's exactly what happened, and as Mr. Klein pointed out, I guess in the simplest way to put it, the DCA was over-inclusive, included parcels of property that should not have been considered as developable vacant land. Um, Mr. Snikis went through the analysis, and that's how we arrived at the 496 number, which we then submitted as part of the, just to simplify, part of the process, it was submitted to the courts, but it's really the Affordable Housing Dispute Program, which is operated by the courts, so I won't get too far into that. But then, yes, to the point, the, the courts agreed with us, and they said 496 is the right number. They, in essence, found the builder's uh, challenge to be without any merit, um, and said, yes, Township, you're right, go forward with your 496. And what's important about that is that the Township retained its immunity. So by, and I'll touch on this at the end, by complying with these deadlines that the statute has put out there, the Township retains immunity from builders remedy lawsuits, which, I'm not saying that's the end-all, be-all, but that's very important. Because if you lose your immunity, uh, you have example of what's going on in West Orange now, where you have municipalities being sued by multiple builders, potentially more, because they don't have a plan in place, so they do not have their immunity. Um, so, moving forward, with that, with that number in hand, it was then left to determine how to develop the plan. And on its face, people may think, well, it's just vacant land that's available. Well, that's not entirely accurate, because the statute in essence says that you also have to take into account what are basically interested parties, or, or developers that bring property to you, that may not be used in the way that, that makes sense, that's obsolete. Times have changed, it just doesn't make sense there's a better use for it, which maybe is affordable housing. Um, in Parsippany's case, there were a great number of, well, I'll just say, interested parties, uh, be it, uh, commercial office buildings that are no longer viable as the times have changed, and a lot more people work remotely and just the workforces shrink. Um, uh, potential hotels that no longer seem viable, or I don't want to say seem viable, that could be better repurposed otherwise. Um, and projects like that, which were what were presented, and the statute says, although you may not have vacant land, if you have land that is developable and could be repurposed, you have to take that into account. So, where you might see some other towns or read articles about how their towns are pushing their numbers down to try to do it, to, I don't want to say negligible numbers, but to something lower, it's unknown whether they had any, you know, interest, how many interested parties they had, kind of what they're doing to try to drive the numbers down, and how, I'll say, how aggressive an approach, uh, is being done. And I think what you'll see here, and what Mr. Snikis will talk about, is the approach taken is one that's pragmatic, that's legally defensible, defensible from a planning perspective, and to Mr. Klein's point, is you can't fully insulate yourself from liability, but it, it does that as much as, at least we think is reasonable in this case. And, and I think that's something to keep in mind. Um, the, uh, the plan ultimately was, uh, presented to the Planning Board and adopted at its June meeting. Uh, the statute required that a plan be adopted by June 30th, and again, that's another deadline. If you don't adopt it by then, you lose your immunity, which is what West Orange is going through now. So the Planning Board did look at it, found it to be, found the plan as proposed to be consistent with the master plan, and then unanimously voted to adopt. Uh, so that was filed. The plan is now on file with the, again, the courts or the program, whatever you will. Um, the council tonight did endorse it by the consent agenda. I, the way the statute is and the way housing plans are adopted, the Planning Board does the heavy lifting, they actually adopted. Um, so, tonight is more about the, going through, continuing the process. Um, and then just to touch on it again, you know, this, the, the statute was enacted, so all the municipalities have to comply. I guess they, they're being told you have to comply. Certain ones cannot comply, and they, they deal with the consequences. The consequences are the lack of immunity. Another one is the inability to use your development fees, fees that you collect through developments that are usually utilized by the Township. The statute, as amended, says you can't do that. You're out of compliance, you don't get to use those fees. So, that's another tool, but the statute, again, whether you like it or not, the statute made available and puts the onus on the municipalities to comply with these obligations. Um, so that's what the plan is, that's what the plan does. The plan addresses the Township's 496 number, and again, Ed will get into the, the, the process as to how. And it does it from a sensible perspective, that's defensible legally, defensible from a planning perspective, and again, that's not to say there's not gonna be a challenge. There could be, it was to say there's still a defensible position. Um, and you know, in the long run, plans can be amended, it's not something that's intended, but the reality is to, to, it's a 10-year plan. Things change, certain projects come on, certain projects don't come to fruition. You know, this, this plan is about projects that are viable, but as we all know, that's, the reality is they don't, they don't all come online, times change. So it's not impossible that the plan is amended, but at this point in time, again, as Ed will discuss, this is legally defensible. but at this point in time, again, as Ed will discuss, this is a legally defensible plan from a, uh, planning perspective and legal perspective.
Good evening. Uh, Ed Snikus, just so everybody knows who I am, I'm a professional planner and a licensed landscape architect in New Jersey. I've, I have had the opportunity and the privilege to represent Parsippany through your third round and fourth round plan now that we're planning for and we've put in place. Um, I'll follow through with a lot of the topics and items that were touched on by both the mayor, uh, the council, excuse me, the business administrator, and Mr. Glass as well. Uh, but yeah, I'll try to touch on the actual details of the plan to give the public and the, the council some of the background behind this. And the reason why we're here is that the June 30th deadline was important because we currently have, or had, protection from developers' remedy lawsuits to June 30th of this year, of 2025. And the reason why we did is because we had a certified plan back from the third round that we adopted back in 2019. Um, and that 2019 report protected us during that time period from developers' remedy lawsuits because we had actual physical properties and developments and zoning in place for affordable housing. And the affordable housing was in fact, supported by the court and the court master that we've established. So again, the underlying aspect of the housing plan is to maintain compliance with the mandated affordable housing requirements. And we have a mandated affordable housing requirements because about 50 years ago, in 1975, there was Mount Laurel 1. And that established the requirements that every municipality has a constitutional obligation to zone for affordable housing. The question became over the years, how to do that? What are actually the rules? It's still in a state of flux. Um, and in fact, as Dustin just mentioned, is that in March of last year, the laws were changed again. They were adjusted, uh, probably a fifth time, I think, Mount Laurel 5 or Mount Laurel 6 at this point. So where we are right now is we're trying to, we've submitted a plan to establish a defendable position through that plan that complies with the rules and complies with the mandate that comes from the Fair Housing Act. And the Fair Housing Act is applicable to all municipalities with the exception of urban aid municipalities. And our township is in fact, subject to Fair Housing Act. So we're addressing what's called the Fair Housing Act 2, which is then amended by the March amendment. In that March amendment, it's just some points to consider is that they abolished COA. COA was the Council on Affordable Housing that previously was a state agency that established all these rules and allowed municipalities to address certain issues. That has been now removed. And as Dustin mentioned a moment ago, is that our submissions are now made to the court, a specific element of the court. And that will be the entity to review and consider any disputes associated with our housing plan. What was also mentioned as well is the discussion with, uh, Department of Community Affairs, as the business administrator talked about. Um, in that instance, in January of 2025, uh, prior to that, back in October of last year, DCA submitted and did calculations. And they established a statewide need of 84,000 units, affordable units throughout the entire state, based upon certain rules and regulations that were established through a Jacobson decision, which was a court action down in Mercer County. In that action, that established certain rules that established the numbers and how to calculate the numbers. It didn't, in addition to that, it also established the rationale for how the numbers would be distributed to municipalities. And as was mentioned a moment ago, the number was much higher. It was at 553. When we went through the calculations, we found that there were several areas that were over-calculated by the state. And so we asked for those areas to be omitted and reduced our overall need down to 496. The court set that number on, uh, May 13th of this year, and we were then able to establish a plan since, from May to the June deadline. In that, uh, adjustment, there is a perspective need, which is called a new construction need of 496 units. But then there's also what's called a present need. The present need is a need that's associated with rehabilitation of existing units within the municipality. Parsippany has a long history of rehabilitating existing homes. We have a rehabilitation program and funding that we've been applying to that program. Um, and it's something that we look to advance and actually enhance in this fourth round process, and I'll talk to that in a moment. But the state has calculated a present need of 138 units. We feel it's probably less than that, but for the time being, we've accepted that number, but we can always debate and we, and we adjust that number. Just for purposes of the public and, and purposes of people's understanding, Parsippany doesn't, doesn't just sit here at the 496 units of affordable units. In addition to that, there are many other communities such as Bendville, which has a number of 485, Hanover at 544, uh, Bonfield has 410, Morris Township has 571. So as you can see, there's many other communities that have other numbers, including in Bergen County, in Paramus, for those who are familiar, Paramus, they have a number of 1,523. So that's how widely, uh, varied the numbers are. They have a thousand unit cap, but still, that's a staggering number for them to adjust. Not to say that we don't have a large number, I just wanted everyone to have an understanding and a perspective of what the overall need is throughout the state. In addition to that, when we looked at the housing plan, coming from the third round into the fourth round, in the third round, we saw what was called a vacant land adjustment. And that's a provision that's permitted under the Fair Housing Act, and also the rules that were established earlier in the earlier rounds, is that it allows for municipalities that have limited vacant land. And you would think in Parsippany, well, we do have some vacant land in some areas, but that when we do our calculations, we, we then factor for certain things like environmental constraints, flood zones, steep slopes, things of that nature. That allowed us in the third round to reduce our number significantly. Um, from, it was previously over 1,000 units, and we reduced it down to a, a realistic development potential of 845. When we recalculated that in the fourth round, we found that there was no additional area that we didn't calculate for in the third round that would have raised that number any higher of 845. And the reason why that analysis is important is that we look at that from the standpoint of what is vacant, and we've affirmatively addressed that prior 845 units, and I'll talk to you in a moment, uh, that prior third round plan requirement. But as Dustin, uh, Mr. Glass has mentioned a moment ago, is that the Fair Housing Act also identifies that if you have willing developers and willing property conditions, whether they be in a state of redevelopment, or they're in a underutilized position, you are obligated to consider those. And that's actually in the act. And that's something that when we looked at our plan and we balanced the interests and the discussions about where, uh, the interested developers were, we, we needed to keep an eye on that factor. We had to keep that in mind in order to have a plan that was defendable. So instead of coming in and just saying, oh, we're gonna reduce our number down substantially, we had to consider those conditions because we had so many potential interested parties. I think it was close to 20. Uh, the township with limited vacant land can in fact, adjust that need, but yet these willing, uh, property owners were something that we had to consider. So we then looked at all the various properties and went through a review process, uh, with regard to each one. And when we did that, we looked at, uh, areas that were potentially in a state of redevelopment, or other sites that were represented appropriate adaptive reuse of the existing buildings. In addition to that, we also looked at their geographic distribution within the municipality, uh, where were they located in relative context to major highways and things of that nature. So that was another guiding factor by which we then planned for the potential locations of the affordable housing for the fourth round. We also looked at the Highlands Master Plan Land Use Capability Zones, and then factored those into sites for consideration. What we found is that the sites that we did select for the plan, uh, all of them were within an existing community zone, or what was called a lake community zone. So they were already in a state of current development, uh, which establishes the current disturbance of the properties. So therefore, from that standpoint, when you look at the Highlands Capability Zones, the redevelopment of those properties or repurposing of the properties would be appropriate in those situations. No locations were environmentally constrained subzones, and all the locations represented Highlands regional master plan consistency. So I just wanted that to be, for the public to be aware of that. In addition to that, we also looked at the water supply, because in the last round, those that remember, there was something called a scarce resource order, that because of the conditions of our wells and the well, and water supply that we had at the time, we needed to appropriately rehabilitate our wells. And in fact, due to the rehabilitation of the wells, uh, we then looked at the overall planned, uh, aspect of the housing plan as well as the proposals, and we found that there was sufficient water supply when we calculated for those areas. We also, um, looked at, uh, from the standpoint of when we were going to be, uh, selecting certain properties, obviously I mentioned a moment ago about the location next to highways, would they be comparable to existing commercial developments and/or could we align appropriate buffers on the properties to safeguard the future residents that might be at those locations? In addition to that, we then put together draft zoning requirements associated with those individual properties. Those draft zoning requirements are in a state of, uh, draft right now. They will be subject to further finalization. Also, there would be also future full site plan review of any sites that were selected, as well as the, a review of off-site impacts and fair share of improvements. So we did select to address the full 496, seven individual properties, and they are as such. Uh, Ford Gate Hall, uh, which is a development that's an existing office development, uh, that would be a proposed conventional and stacked townhouse project. Uh, Park Lanidex, uh, those that may know of that project, uh, that project is currently under development, under redevelopment, but there are still other sections of that project that are available for further redevelopment. And since that's current and existing area of redevelopment, it seemed appropriate to identify that location for additional development. So we did so. In addition to that, there is on Route 46, what's called the Bixmore Redevelopment Mixed-Use Location, which is the former movie theater, which is across from municipal building on 46. That represented an opportunity to do a mixed-use development at that location. So we selected that site as well. In addition to that, the Embassy Suites also approached the municipality to adaptively reuse that building. What's unique about that building, for those who are aware of the interior, is that it has a large atrium, and it allows itself with that large atrium to be adaptively redeveloped. It's not easy to redevelop an existing hotel building because of the structural elements that are associated with the various rooms in order to make them living units. But yet, that building did in fact, allow for that. In addition to that, we looked at another development on Interpace, 400 Interpace. That's also another mixed-use office multifamily development. Also, One Upper Pound Road, we would also have a stacked and conventional townhouse development at that location. And lastly, number seven would be the redevelopment with a small R of the Serbo Lumber, uh, property, where that would be another location for a multifamily development. And all toll, as was mentioned earlier, this total adds up to 372 individual affordable units of credit. But that due to the aspect of adaptively reusing or redeveloping a property, you're allowed to gain bonus credits associated with that. So we applied a 25% factor of bonuses. And that's the maximum number of bonuses you can apply based upon the rules. And that would be 124 for the 496 units. So the 124 plus the 372 total brings us to the 496 number. And so that is affirmatively addressing the entirety of the fourth round need. And that puts us in the best position to defend our plan. What I do need to talk about as well is that we needed to do also a lookback in our plan. Our lookback would be looking at the third round to make sure we were compliant. We did so, and in fact, I'm happy to report that we are in fact, compliant with the third and prior round requirements, although it did take some adjustment to two locations. Uh, two locations in that third round plan, uh, became sites that were not developable for residential. And that was due to the changes at the DEP level, due to the floodplain restrictions. And according to the rules, you're not allowed to put residential within those areas if in fact, you can't prove that at least a car can enter and exit without entering through a flood zone. And so those were located on Edwards Road. We did replace those units with credits that we had from the Park Realty location. And so we're able to affirmatively address that deficiency. So that is what the rules call for, is for you to reevaluate those conditions and to make sure you're complying with them. So we did so as well. In addition to that, in the third round, we did address affirmatively the 845 units, but the remainder of units, and this may sound confusing, is that we had an 845 unit need that was established by the court, but that in addition, if I, if I, if you recall what I mentioned a moment ago, is that we had over a thousand units required in that third round period. And after you apply the 845 units, we have an unmet need of 469 units. That unmet need is a need that's, uh, placed upon a municipality that adjusts its need number. Uh, but you have to put in some effort to address that need. You don't have to address the entirety of that need. It's a little bit more of a, uh, open discussion about how to address that. And with the court, uh, adjudicator, they were called court masters at the time, we established, uh, six different locations where we could address that unmet need. And those six different locations are still appropriate locations, and some of them actually have been developed. And so we do have credits towards our unmet need. So I will be, uh, it's, it's important to mention that from the housing plan, we have affirmatively addressed a large part of our unmet need requirement. So that is also provided in the plan. And so with that, that summarizes the overall housing element. And where we are right now is that we've submitted the document to the, the courts for review. We'll be waiting for the challenge period after August 31st. We'll be hearing back if there are any. Uh, the governing body at this level will be looking to endorse the housing element and fair share plan, in order for that document then to move forward with the court's review. Um, and after that point, if, after challenges are finished, uh, we would be looking to adopt ordinances by March 31st of 2026. So that gives you the overview of the overall document. There's a lot more to it, of course, but I hopefully, I thank you for bearing with me, just hearing it out as far as what's in the housing plan.
Thank you, Ed. Okay, moving along. Ordinance is first reading. Ordinance 202513, and ordinance amending chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 35. B, Handicap Parking on Streets for Private Residences of the Court of the Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, Morris, Carolina, New Jersey. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, held on July 22nd, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Could I please have a motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Wow, that was good. Okay. Uh, motion made by Ms. Hernandez, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Kiri.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 202514, and ordinance of the Township Council of Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing chapter 430 titled zoning to amend section 430 dash 141, titled permitted uses to update same. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and pass on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, held on July 22nd, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the, uh, with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve, please.
Motion second.
Motion made by Mr. Negria, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Negria.
Yes.
And Mr. Kiri.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance 202515. An ordinance of the Township Council of Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, amending the Township, uh, Township, Persippany, Troy Hills Court of Ordinances to Appeal, Chapter 175, Flood Hazard Protection, to adopt a new chapter, 175, Flood Hazard Protection, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a flood plan, a floodplain administrator, and providing for severability and an effective date. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and pass on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of Township, Persippany, Troy Hills, held on July 22nd, 2025, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM prevailing time, or soon thereafter as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time
at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with a notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. May I please have a motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Reneglia, seconded by Ms. Hernandez. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Reneglia.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Kiri.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, non-consent agenda, R twenty twenty-five one thirty-seven, authorizing award of contract of, uh, Metertic Utility Service Incorporated for the Meter Replacement Program Phase Two Project. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McGrath, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Reneglia.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Approval of payroll and bills list. CFO Angelica Sabatini recommends authorization for payment. Number one, authorizes payment of July eighteen, twenty twenty-five, regular miscellaneous payroll estimated at one million six hundred and fifty thousand, and number two, payment of bills from voucher list of seven twenty-two twenty-five, which is one million six hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and seven cents. May I please have a motion to approve the authorization for payment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Reneglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Reneglia.
Yes.
Motion passes. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Reneglia, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. McGrath.
Yes.
Mr. Musella.
Yes.
Mr. Reneglia.
Yes.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, guys.